Good evening. It's 6:04, and I'm going to call the meeting to order. I'd like everyone to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I also want to note that you have a little less than two hours to make it to the polls if you haven't voted yet. Moving on to our agenda, I would entertain an...
Technically, we should probably have a roll call.
Roll call? Thank you. I didn't see that on the top line in bold letters.
[laughing]
Please call roll.
Member List.
Here.
Vice Chair Keeney.
Here.
Member Juba.
Here.
I noticed this member friend is absent.
Thank you. I would entertain a motion to adopt the consent calendar containing the agenda and the meeting minutes from October 16th.
Move to adopt the consent calendar.
Second?
I have to abstain.
Okay. Can we do that?
Sure.
I can second the motion.
You could second the motion, and he could abstain. Or you could choose to break these out if he felt more comfortable, Member List felt more comfortable voting on the agenda, meaning pull both items into the consent calendar and then individualize approval of 1.1 and 1.2.
Thank you. Would you like to amend your motion to break the items apart?
I amend the motion to pull from the consent calendar both the adoption of the agenda and the adoption of the regular meeting minutes.
Perfect.
To pull?
To take them out of the consent calendar and put them onto our normal agendas, individual items.
Okay. Second? Okay. All in favor? Aye?
Aye.
All right. A motion to adopt the agenda for this evening's meeting.
So moved.
Thank you.
Second?
All right. Do we have to approve that also? Aye. My voice vote.
For the record, was -- did Member Juba second the motion?
I seconded, yes.
Okay. So now we've adopted our agenda without change. Now, can we approve the minutes with just two members present, or should we postpone that?
Well, we have a quorum in which to consider this item.
Okay.
Only two of you need to approve, because that would be the majority of those present.
Okay.
And the other -- the member could -- Member List could abstain.
All right.
Should he choose to.
Would you care to give that motion?
Move to adopt the meeting minutes of October 16th, 2018.
Okay. I have no changes to the meeting minutes. Do you?
No.
Commissioner, did you? Okay.
You second it?
Oh, I have to second it?
Yes.
My apologies to the two members of the audience. This is my first meeting as chair, and it's just not going well. All right. I second your motion to adopt the minutes. Shall we vote on that? Any changes to the minutes?
No.
No? All right. Aye?
Aye.
I abstain.
Thank you. Got it.
All right. I see there are two members in the audience. Are you both here for item 4.1? And just as a matter of housekeeping, we are proposing to continue item 4.2 considering the zoning change for the cannabis business overlay zone request. Having thoroughly messed that up, I'd like to move on to item three. Items of interest to the public or public comment on items not on the agenda. Is there anyone in the audience that'd like to speak on that? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Painter, has there been any written communication that we need to consider?
Not at this time, no.
Thank you very much. Moving on to public hearings, number four, item 4.1, the Niemann's Auto Touch project requiring a general plan amendment and conditional use permit. Mr. Painter, are you ready with your staff report?
I am. Yeah, there are a couple of housekeeping items regarding this particular item on the agenda. First, I want to apologize that your staff report was not paginated. I apologize for that. That could make questions later in the evening difficult. The second item, the applicant's representative, Mr. Dillingham, who's in the audience tonight, informed staff and he submitted revised sheets of their submittal package regarding sheet T1, T2, and sheet A 5.1. The basic change would be the trim color on the building. And so those are reflected in the small exhibits that are provided to you and the wall exhibits behind you. As for tonight's discussion item, the site is approximately two acres in size. It is currently used as a temporary unsurfaced vehicle parking area for the Thompson Auto Center and their surrounding uses. The site has a commercial land use designation and a commercial zone classification. This site was once a portion of a nearly five-acre parcel that was annexed to the city in 2005. In 2017, the parcel was adjusted under a lotline adjustment along with two other parcels, resulting in the existing two-acre lot configuration. The project site address is 136 40 Road. Existing auto sales and service uses are located to the north, east, and west of the site. Also to the west are office uses. South of the site is a vacant single-family home as well as properties located within Eldorado County that also contains single-family homes. The project request was made by property owner Ron Thompson through his agent, or representative, Mr. Dillingham of D&amp;Z Structural Engineering, Inc. The request tonight involves the intent of the project property owner to construct a single-story, 5,800 square foot or approximate, square-foot auto detailing shop building, parking area, and landscaping, which is to be used as a new shop location for the existing Niemann's Auto Touch business, which is currently located at 126 40 Road, which is next door. The new building on the project site is to be accessed by employees only with no public access. The existing office and lobby that serves this business would remain in its current location at 126 40. In order to achieve this intent, this request would amend the text of the commercial land use designation within Part 1 Land Use Circulation Diagrams and Standards of the General Plan Policy Document by removing language that excludes auto sales and service uses as listed as allowable within the commercial designation. This text amendment is shown utilizing highlighted strike-through text within the staff report. A total of 15 existing auto sales and service uses currently operate within the city's commercially-zoned areas of town. Eight of these operate under conditional use permits. One of the conditional use permits was adopted in 1994, and staff has noted that this is currently in conflict with the general plan adoption designation in 1990. Others appear to have had continuous operation of auto-related uses on them prior to and since the adoption of the 1990 general plan. The proposed text amendment would bring these existing conditionally-permitted uses into internal consistency with the current zoning and the general plan. Removing the auto sales and service exclusion has the potential to result in future applications requesting these types of uses in the commercial designation and classification zones in areas of town. These future applications would be subject to discretionary conditional use permits and findings of consistency with the general plan. And just to let you know, those types of conditional use permits would come before the planning commission for your review and approval. By removing the text of the general plan, an application for a conditional use permit for an automobile service use, and an application for site plan review for the construction of the auto detailing use building could then be applied for by the applicant and must be approved by the city before a construction permit for the auto detailing facility can be issued. The applicant has submitted for current consideration tonight all three of these requests, GPA 18-01, CUP 18-01, and SPR 18-02. The requested auto service use would be desirable, convenient, and beneficial to the public in that it would be located in an area containing existing concentrated auto-oriented uses near access to and from Highway 50. As described in the staff report, the request would be consistent with the amended commercial land use designation as well as applicable land use goals and policies of the general plan. It would not be detrimental to surrounding property in that it is designed and is conditioned to comply with regulations within city code and environmental mitigation measures that have been adopted or drafted for your consideration that would lessen potential impacts to the environment to a less insignificant level. Proposed physical construction of the site would involve grading for the construction of the commercial building along with an attached 1,455 square-foot covered vehicle wash station in addition to site improvements including rockery retaining walls, landscaping, onsite storm water detention and treatment facilities, a sand oil separator, as well as paved surfacing. Proposed site grading, building design, and building identification as submitted and as conditioned in staff's report do not detract from the character of adjacent auto sales and service uses. Site grading is minimal to accomplish project construction, and building identification is limited to the site address being placed on the exterior wall. The request would therefore be consistent with the general plan community design element goals and policies regarding grading activity, building appearance, forms, function, and building sign identification. This request as condition is also consistent with the city's site plan review design criteria in that it encourages orderly and harmonious development within the city while maintaining public health, safety, and welfare and property improvement values throughout the community through the provision of building, site, and other site design features that are compatible and consistent with the community as a whole. Public notice for the hearing tonight and the availability of what is called the initial study, mitigated negative declaration, or ISMND, was published in the Mountain Democrat, mailed to property owners within 500 feet of the project site, and posted on the city's website and Facebook platform. The ISMND is provided as Exhibit B of staff's report. The ISMND analyzed potential environmental impacts that the request may have on the project site. Environmental resource areas that would be potentially affected by this potential development of the site include cultural resources and noise. Mitigation measures were identified that would reduce any potential impacts to these potential significant impacts to a less than significant level in the event of encountering during construction unexpected paleontological cultural resources or human remains and a mitigation regarding the potential temporary construction noise impacts. These mitigation measures are included as project conditions of approval. The ISMND was circulated for a 20-day comment period, which ended on October 19th, and no public comments were received. Finally, tonight, the commission is requested to take the actions provided in the staff's report labeled as rooma numerals 1, 2, and 3 to receive and file staff's report, including all exhibits and figures as part of the public record. Number two, make findings regarding tonight's public hearing, including its consideration of the initial study, a mitigated negative declaration that was prepared and circulated for the project. And three, make a recommendation to city council to make findings to receive, adopt, and file the mitigated negative declaration and mitigating monitoring -- mitigation monitoring and reporting plan. Approve the general plan amendment 18-01. Make findings and then approve conditional use permit 18-01. And make findings and then approve site plan review 18-02. As I mentioned earlier, the applicant, Mr. Thompson, and his representative, Mr. Dillingham, are both in the audience this evening. That concludes my staff report.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions of staff from the commissioners? I have one question, Mr. Painter. Rather than doing a general plan amendment, was it ever considered to just change the zoning for this single parcel, this single project? Change the zoning to highway commercial, like the adjoining property where the detailing center?
At one point, we did have those discussions with the applicant. This particular tact is certainly simpler in terms of the complexity of the process of changing the general plan and zoning. Clearly, there are these uses that currently exist in the commercial zone. It's not a new use, clearly by the 15 that I mentioned. Staff believes that they would continue to come forward with you for approval as a discretionary action, and so subject to public hearings. But yes, we did have that discussion.
Okay. And a second question I have. You're proposing that we delete the second half of a parenthetical statement in the allowable uses that excludes automobile sales or service.
Correct.
Leaving the exclude -- still excluding fast-food restaurants. Did you consider just deleting that entire parenthetical phrase?
We did not.
Because -- is that because of the project that came before you? Is limited to auto service?
Correct.
Okay. And perhaps at another time, should a project proponent come forward with a fast-food restaurant? That could be considered at that time as a general plan amendment?
I guess in theory, yes.
Are there any other conflicting? You mentioned that there's 15 auto service places that are in conflict with this exclusion. Are there any fast-food outlets, fast-food restaurants that are in conflict?
Let me clarify that. The sites that do have use permits, they're -- that's an entitlement. They can continue to operate that use. With one exception, the one I mentioned, the others were approved prior to the general plan designation as stated. So they are -- they can continue, provided they adhere to the conditions of approval and remain a business that's active and functioning. They can exist indefinitely. The one in question that was adopted in 1994, the action tonight, well, by council, assuming this moves forward, would bring that one into conformance to the general plan. The other auto-related uses that are in the commercial zone, the staff could not find -- they're so old, they've been there for 40, 50 years. So by the test of time, they have existed, and they are, I guess, technically legal. They're not conforming because they don't have a use permit, but they do exist and can continue as such. There could be provisions in the future, depending on what they do on those locations, where we might want to entertain an expansion of or require a use permit because of some activity or action that they want to do on those properties. But I'm referring to those only that don't have CUPs or conditional use permits. Does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you very much. Yes?
Andrew, I noticed in this there is not a request for any signage for this new building.
Yeah.
Because it does not face 40 Road, would they be entitled to putting signage at the front of either one of the dealerships that are in front of this property? Or do the signs need to be attached to this particular piece of property?
Well, they currently have signage to advertise the location of their office where they will receive their clients. The cars will be distributed or be driven or taken to this facility when constructed.
Oh, okay.
So the customers will never come to this building.
I see.
So there really is no need to advertise, as I understand the application. What they will be required to do by the fire district is to have the address prominently shown.
Right.
Yeah, in a particular stroke height. So they're not requesting any identification.
I understand. Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions of staff? Seeing none, I would like to ask the applicant to step forward and present your request.
DZ Engineering, representing Niemann's Auto and the applicant on the process -- project. And it's basically an auto detailing facility. I think it's 15 bays inside with outside wash bay that's behind the building. The outside wash bay is a power washing facility. And it essentially is a facility that's going to serve Niemann's just to grow and to get a few more employees and then also vacate a building that they're currently using to allow the Thompson dealership to put more mechanics in that building, so allow Thompson's to grow as well. So it's essentially creating jobs and trying to do it in as efficient way as possible with the most efficient building that we could put up. And we tried to make it look as nice as possible to match the front building. And the confusion over the color is which front building were we going to match? And Steve Niemann said, "I want my colors to be represented." So we changed it from the Thompson red to the Niemann's blue. And other than that, we dressed up the building a little bit, put some awnings on it. We're using the nicer-looking metal surface for the metal building. So it's a smooth surface that'll be painted instead of the corrugated metal that you might see on a typical metal building. We have some overhangs that we added as well to add to the look, but also add to the function. They're going to be shading the windows and also creating a nice drip edge. And then the parking lot itself is actually going to be mostly used for the dealership to park cars in. And so the parking that we show on our plan is just for the employees that are occupying the Niemann's building, and the rest of it is just open storage lot for new vehicles.
Okay. Any questions of the proponent?
Just a clarification. At the beginning, you said 15 bays. I think the -- what the plan shows is five bays inside. Is that correct?
Yeah, okay. I'm mistaken. Sorry.
Right. Right. Okay.
Okay. Yeah, I'm sorry. It's been a while since I looked at it.
Will all of the activity, all the detailing activity, take place inside the building? Or will there be some activity outside? And I see there's a truck with a cover over it. Would there be some work taking place outside of the building?
No, not that I'm aware of. They've got a detailing bay that's specific for window tinting, and that's an enclosed bay. And then they've got the open bays of five that'll be just all -- I'm not even quite sure what Niemann's does once they have them in the bays. I assume they clean it up and take out all the imperfections in the paint. And I'm sure Ron can speak a lot better than I can.
What it is basically is a -- Would you like to step up to the microphone, please?
Basically, what it is is a prep bay out back. So they prep the car. And, you know, we get a lot of cars in with all the McDonald's wrappers and, you know, cheeseburgers laying on the seat and all that. Anyway, they clean the car out first, wash it, and then they bring it inside to actually do any buffing or any of that kind of work. So that's what the bay's about out back.
Okay.
So.
Thank you.
I don't believe that you're just going to be working in the parking lot on the cars, right?
No, 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 no. That bay in the back is designed, it has a pressure washer, and it has the recovery system in the ground, you know, for like any car wash would have. And that's where all the pre-work gets done, car gets dried off, and then brought inside to get the final beauty job done to it. So.
Before you sit down, Mr. Thompson, this parcel is a separate parcel, not part of either one of the dealerships? Is that correct?
No. What we did was, because that was the debate when I was purchasing it, we wound up putting in our family trust, Betty and I. So it's actually part of Toyota now.
Oh, okay.
So it took it from six acres to eight acres.
Okay.
And so, one piece.
All right. Very good. Thank you.
No other questions? Thank you very much. I did have one question about -- I appreciate the level of detail.
Sure.
That you gave us in your drawings and the renderings. I was wondering if you had considered using or installing a cool roof. What made me think of that was that the painting, the standing seam construction.
I do believe that the white paint that's used for the roof panels has a cooling factor to it.
Excellent.
So, yeah, that's part of Butler's metal building package. And Butler is one of the better metal building companies, and their paints are pretty good. I've used a few of their buildings in the past. But I'm pretty sure we have the -- the paint is a white paint that has a cool factor to it.
Excellent. I'm always looking for ways for us to improve the energy efficiency, especially of our new buildings. And I know that there's a -- well, actually, I just anticipate a lot of use in the summer for detailing. Maybe make it a little bit easier on your workers and save you a little bit of energy for cooling. Thank you very much.
Yes. And if I could add, that was part of the reasons why we didn't do skylights, and we did the windows underneath the overhangs.
Yeah, a lot of heat gain with skylights.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Open up the hearing. There's no comments from the public? Excuse me while I go through my checklist here. I would like to bring this back to the commission for consideration.
Could we do a house item here, starting with conditional of approval, labeling that page 12 through the end of the -- the end would be on page 17. That way, we're talking about the same thing.
Okay.
Where you find conditional -- conditions of approval.
Excuse me.
Once again, staff apologizes for not paging. We'll cover for you.
Yes, that would be page 12.
There. Okay. So that's page 12?
Yeah, mark that as page 12. And then the last page of the conditions of approval would be page 17, I think.
Yes.
Which ends with item 46 and then listing the attachments?
Yep.
Okay. Thank you very much. I believe now I need to request a motion to open this up for debate? Is that my next -- or we can go ahead and talk about it before we have the motion? Okay. Well, I'll start with just an overview of my thinking on this. I actually most -- I think it's an excellent project and a good use of the property adjacent to those other uses. I did struggle with the general plan amendment, requiring a general plan amendment for a single parcel for a single use. And I think that's where I spent most of my deliberation outside of this meeting, trying to figure out the implications of that. Because the general plan is our overall document, and then I struggled with the fact that we, you know, are -- typically what I'd rather see is a zoning change as opposed to a general plan change. But then when I read in the staff report that we already have these 15 other exceptions, I realized the efficiency and the use of considering a general plan amendment for this. Well, as it turns out, it's not just for this parcel, but it is for the other businesses that are in the same classification of commercial as opposed to highway commercial or another designation. So that's where I -- I say that's where I was really struggling with this. And I thank you for clarifying that you did consider other approaches as opposed to a general plan amendment. But I see the utility in that. Other comments?
I certainly echo your sentiments about the general plan amendment, but it's, in my understanding, where this is more of a housekeeping issue of the general plan than it is changing the general plan foundationally.
Mm-hmm. I agree. With no other discussion, I would like to see a motion to -- Help me with my language. I'm looking for a motion to adopt.
Can we do this one by one?
One by one.
There are three separate requests in this.
Okay.
Our first is the general plan amendment.
Would you prefer to consider all three requests? Or would you rather lump it all together as one and adopt the staff report? I think that's the way I would prefer to do it as well, since it's all considered in the initial -- the initial study mitigation, mitigated neg deck. Do you have any, I would, I would like to see all three combined.
Let me get this right. Move that we adopt the amendments to the general plan as outlined in the staff report to section 18-01, or rather, move that we adopt general plan amendment 18-01 as outlined in the staff report, and to approve the conditional use permit 18-01 with conditions as outlined in the staff report, and move to approve site plan review 18-02 as detailed in the staff report. I think I got that right.
I would just suggest that you add to your motion that you are making a recommendation to the city council.
Yes, and adding that these are recommendations to council.
Okay.
I second.
Is there any further discussion on the motion before us? No? Mr. Painter, please call the phone.
Sure, Member Jubba.
Hi.
Vice Chair Keeney.
Hi.
Member List.
Hi.
Thank you very much.
Before we go on, I don't have a date in which this will, just for the benefit of the applicant and their agent tonight, I know the director is going to be looking at finding a date for you for council to hear this. It might be the first meeting in December, but we'll, we'll keep in touch with you guys. So, there's no appeal to this decision tonight, because you, all you're doing is forwarding your recommendation to city council.
City council, okay. Thank you for clarifying that. Okay, moving on to item 4.2, zoning change, 18-01 cannabis business overlay zone. The request is that the planning commission hear public comment with respect to this zoning change. However, we have gotten direction, since we don't have a quorum on this particular item, we would prefer to move this, continue this item to a date certain of December 4th, 2018. I see there's another member in the audience. Excuse me, sir, are you here to comment on the cannabis?
I was just interested to see where it was coming from.
Okay, thank you very much for coming down here tonight. Mr. Rivas, do you have any comments that you would like to make on item 4.2, please?
The only comment I think staff would like to make on this is, we are recommending it be continued to your December 4th regular meeting, which we anticipate there would be a quorum to be able to consider this item.
Okay, thank you very much. At this time, then, I would entertain a motion to continue this item as Mr. Rivas has suggested.
Still moved?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any other comments or debate on that? All right, should we have a roll call vote on that as well?
Member List.
Aye.
Vice Chair Keeney.
Aye.
Member Jubba.
Aye.
Okay, thank you very much. That passes. Now, I'm going to close item 4.2 and move on to item 5. Thank you, sir. See you on December 4th. Matters from commissioners and staff. Are there any matters from the commissioners that they'd like to bring forward at this Anything from staff?
Yeah, a couple items. The MAP amendment that you heard the last planning commission meeting, that item will be heard by city council a week from tonight in this, in this building. That's the property off of Carricka Court. So, that item will be heard by the, by the planning commission, excuse me, the city council. They'll hear your recommendation at that meeting. The, I also want to announce that the regular meeting of November 20th, that's the Tuesday of the Thanksgiving week, we will not be having a meeting, so don't worry about getting a packet tomorrow or next week for that. Also want to remind the audience that we have, and anybody watching on television, that the recruitment for the open planning commission seat, the deadline is this Friday at 5:00 P.M. So, anyone interested, applications can still be submitted to our city clerk on the fourth floor of City Hall. Director Rivas, do you have any items?
I have nothing to report unless any commissioners have any specific questions or issues they'd like to raise.
Given the schedule on the applications for the vacancy, when do we expect to have that vacancy filled? I guess it depends on when the council meets.
Yeah, I think there's some, there's some factors here. We are approaching holiday time. I don't have an answer for you as to, I have no idea how many applicants we have as of yet, let alone when council can get together to actually interview the applicants. So, I really don't have a timetable for you, but I guess, I guess would be probably the December meetings.
You imagine we would have a, fill the vacancy by December the 4th?
Yeah, unless we receive no applications, then they'd have to re-recruit, I guess, yeah.
Okay. Thank you very much. No other business before us. I move to adjourn the meeting at 6:39.
6:40.
Okay. Thank you all.